Call this work session order, April 27th, 2023. It's time for Mr. Muller to give us the indication.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for loving us and blessing us, Lord, and thank you for giving us time to assemble together and do your work here for the children and families of Coffey County. I pray that the things that we do and say tonight are pleasing in your sight. I pray for a spirit of unity in the building. I pray for protection over our schools each and every day, Lord. And I thank you in advance for all the blessings that you've provided and will provide for our schools, families, and community. In your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. No changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Need permission to adopt the agenda as it is?
Mr. Davis, go on.
Mr. Wade, on favor?
Yes, start.
School update.
We're going to go over that.
George Washington called for freshman county.
Can we push that back, Mr. Morris, a little bit? He's running a little behind.
Easy.
I apologize.
That's fine.
He's a man.
That's fine. It's cool.
All right. Let's hold for the minutes.
He's here, Mr. Jefferson. I'm sorry.
Is he here?
Quite a sight.
Oh, Mike Spikes is filling in for him tonight. I apologize. I appreciate it.
Not David. Thank you, Mark. Mark James today.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Be better next time, if you're with me. Thank y'all for having me. I'm sorry I'm late. I just wanted to touch on a few things that we've got going on on our campus. Really proud of that first note there, the goal one of our school-wide improvement plan. The goal is for 92% of our students to get the four academic credits they needed. They're able to earn eight, but the four that they have to have to graduate is what we're focusing on right now, to get them out to high school. We exceeded that goal with 97% of those students earning all four academic.
Wow, awesome.
Yeah, it's really, we're real proud of that. Some of the factors we contribute that to are unit recovery, that's a daily, as they work through units, if they're struggling, teachers go back and reteach and retest and that sort of thing. Also, we retake classes when we're able to, and we've got summer school that is really, really important. That summer school also is for, to gain new credits, not always to go back and retake credits. Our eighth graders coming up, they have an opportunity to knock out a few courses in the summer. Personnel information, we currently have, and Mr. Locke can probably attest to this, we've got 15 out of our 32 teachers that are going through, in some form or fashion, a certification program. That's a lot, but I think that's going to be the trend for education for a while. So we're excited about that. Our mentor teachers are jam of, and we, right now, only got one vacancy in ELA. I really wish he would stay, but I think he's going to move to Atlanta. So we're excited about that. Ms. Kaylee Bennett, our Ag Education teacher, is our Teacher of the Year. I genuinely think she's got an opportunity to win County Teacher of the Year, and I think she could run at state and national, you know, she could be a contender. So she's also jam of. Curriculum, y'all are probably going to talk about this, I think, tonight, Dr. Tucker, about conceptual physics. Okay. So y'all hear more about this later, but we're transitioning from physical science to conceptual physics. Coffey High School reached out to us last year and asked if we start collectively looking at that. Basically, what it is, is you have to have a certain amount of rigor courses to get HO scholarship, and when you're applying for colleges. And so, physical science, or excuse me, conceptual physics offers that class. And so, we talked to our teachers, we've been working on it for about a year and a half, or about a year, to try to make sure everybody's on board. And like I said, folks from high school came down and worked, our teachers worked on it. So the requirement for the teachers is not going to change a whole lot. I mean, they're basically the same courses. So you'll hear about that more tonight. If you need some more information, I'd be happy to fit you in. Still have summer school for upcoming ninth graders and for ninth graders that need to work on some credits. And we're working on assessment blueprinting throughout the year to keep, make sure we're getting quality data out of the assessments and stuff that we're doing to help drive instruction. Building operations, we're excited. We've got our audio enhancement, video enhancement completed. So we got new bales all through the schools. Logan, we appreciate that. That was a task that I don't think everybody was ready for, or maybe not on our end. Me and Logan were ready, but, you know, we got done. We're scheduled to get new projectors this summer, Logan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, there at the bottom, we're looking at increasing our focus on the whole child. I know y'all are seeing it too, in our community, which is having just the amount of kids that are talking about hurting themselves, actually hurting themselves, vape stuff. So we're going to try and really, you know, really focus on the whole child. And I always say this by a genuine meaning, we appreciate the opportunity to be our own campus. I know it's a unique setup, but I think by, you know, when we get them, by the time they leave, we pretty much know all the students, we know their quirks, and, you know, what makes them unique, and we're able to really focus on that. So again, I appreciate, I know it's a different setup than most systems have, but I think it's a good one. So that's all I got. Any questions? Like I said, I'm sorry I was late.
I'm like literally sweating off. Next on our agenda, we have the minutes from last month's meetings. Any questions or amendments to the minutes that we need to make? If there are none, then we will place those on the consent agenda at our regular meeting. Finance, we have several items on the finance report tonight. The first one is our financial report. We do have Ms. Bradford here with us tonight, formerly Ms. Young. So Ms. Bradford, congratulations on your change of name and wedding. And so, at this time, the floor is yours, so.
Okay. The first document we're seeing is our financials as of March 31st, 2023. We have a cash balance as of March of $31,645,662.42. Our revenues for, as of March, are at $53,168,033.37. And expenditures through March, $47,227,21.96. I do want to mention with our expenditures, April will be our first month that we will be paying the increased employer rate for the health insurance, so that will change. And when we do that in April, we will also be paying January's premium as well through the rest of this fiscal year. So just wanted to let you know that we'll see those expenditures go up moving forward to the end of June. So at the end of March, our fund equity is at $31,645,662.42. The next document is our monthly comparison of our fund balance, and you can see we dropped slightly from last month, but compared to the other fiscal years, the drop is kind of in line with some of the prior fiscal years there.
And that is lagging, it lags a month, so that's actually February's, I'm sorry, I jumped to the SPOS. I jumped ahead.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. The next document is our year-to-date, our detailed report of each of our categories, and it starts with our revenue. So you can see there, the revenues are through that, and then the second page states our total revenues as of July. It shows where 71% of our revenues that we budgeted. The next portion is our expenditures by the different functions of the school system. You can see, as we discussed earlier, the $47 million approximately that we have in expenditures there, and we're at 63% of our budget thus far. Okay. And this document here is our SPOS report. So the revenues for the month of March is the $647,076.64. And yes, this is lagging for one month, so this would actually be February's revenue there. Any questions on any of those documents? Okay. The next item is our audit. We completed our audit in March of this year. It began back in October, where we submitted all our documentation to the Department of Audits as far as our financial statements, our ledgers, and bank statements, and receipts, and vouchers. And we're happy to say that for FY '22, there were no findings on the audit report.
You all have a copy of the full audit report there, so in your downtime, if you want to read an exciting document there, you can read it link. But it is a very detailed report, and I'm excited that we had a very, very clean audit, and we are likely going to be in line, hopefully, for another Award of Excellence in accounting. So great job to Ms. Young and her department, and all of our bookkeepers at the school level do a great job making sure we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars. So we really appreciate all that y'all do. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is our FY '24 budget hearing. And as stated in Georgia law, we're to have two public hearings dealing with the budget, so this will be the first of our hearing. At this time, I would call to order a budget hearing number one, to review our FY '24 budget process. And we will start this hearing at this time. And if Ms. Bradford, if you want to go ahead and go through the documents that our board members have in their notebook, can explain the budgeting process and the numbers that they have before them tonight.
Yes, sir. The first document we're looking at is the first tab is your calendar. This is our projected timeline for our budget process, and we reviewed this item at the retreat, but I'm just going to briefly go through it. In February, we began meeting with our principals, our directors, and our administration, and we discussed our projections for our enrollment, our projections for our staffing, and also our operational expenses. And from those meetings in the month of March, the finance department began projecting those revenues and expenditures. So today, for our first public hearing, we're going to present our projected revenues and expenditures at our first public hearing. And then, in May, the next board meeting, May 11th, will be our second public hearing that we're required to have to go over the budget. Then we would like to adopt the budget at the end of May or 1st of June, so that for the month of June, we can prepare the budgets in our financial system. So we'll be set to go July 1 with our expenditures for fiscal year '24. Okay. Any questions on the calendar? The next item is...
Go to the first one.
Revenue. The next tab is the revenue. So this is the projected revenue for '24. And at the top of the sheet, you can see '23. Those were the budget, the budget that we established last fiscal year. And then, the projected '23 as of right now, kind of as revenues are coming in now, what we're projecting. And then FY '24, what we're projecting. Okay? So the top portion is our local tax revenue. So we are estimating the revenue there at $16,609,000. So that would be up from fiscal year '23, about $645,000. The next portion is our other local revenue. And the revenue there, we're projecting at $551,000, and it's up just a couple thousand from last fiscal year, '23. Next, we have our state QBE. You can see there that there is an increase of approximately $4.9 million, and that will be due to the health insurance premium increases, as well as the salaries, the $2,000 salary increase, and the classified employees salary increases there. Transportation is up slightly, nursing slightly, for a total QBE revenue projection of $50,516,051. The next is other state revenue. Our equalization from last year is up approximately $49,000 from last year, and our charter system funding is up approximately $30,000 there. And the remainder of those grants are our CTAE and some of our bus state grants there, for a total of other state revenue at $11,147,856. The next portion is our federal grants. This is our Medicaid reimbursement that we get from our therapists and our nurses. We're estimating that at $720,000, and that is the same that we did last year. We've not increased that to $720,000. Lastly, is other sources, and we're estimating those at $50,000, which is the same as last year. So the total revenue that we're projecting for fiscal year '24 is $70,593,907. So it is up from last year. When you look at that budget, it's about $5 million, 5.1 million up. And again, that's a lot due to our QBE with the health insurance premium increase and the salary increase.
Now, the state, thank goodness, is sending the money for much of that state health insurance increase, so.
For the, yes, sir. All right. The next section is our budget, and these are expenditures that we're estimating. This page here is our overview of what is in the budget. So for teachers' retirement, TRS, for FY '24, the employer rate is at 19.98%. That is no change from last fiscal year. It's the same percentage rate. For our salaries and benefits, the $2,000 increase in the certified salary schedule is reflected, and the 3% increase in the classified salary schedule. The employer health insurance rate increased to $1,580 per month from the $945 per month for certified employees. So again, this will begin January of this fiscal year, so when we move into fiscal year '24, we will have, it'll be this rate for the whole fiscal year. Where now, we're paying $11,340 per employee. Moving into fiscal year '24, we'll be paying $18,960 per employee. Okay? And then the employer health insurance increase for classified employees, that will be at $1195 per month from $945. Now, this goes into effect January of 2024. So that increase will be for six months of the budget. Okay? They're going to phase that in. So in January of '25, we'll see another increase in classified to $1445. And in January of '26, fiscal year '26, there'll be $1,580, so they'll be at the rate that certified are at. Okay? And also, within the budget is the 49% employees, they'll be paid on the state salary schedule for where their credential at. Okay? Any questions there?
And then, basically, what this shows is where we showed the revenue was up approximately $5 million in the last report, this report reflects what that $5 million will go towards paying for.
This report here is the totals of each functional area of the expenditures, and we start with instruction. This is where our teachers and our paras, our instructional staff that are in the classroom, their salaries are paid out of this area. So we're projecting approximately $51,507,000 expense in that area, and that would be an increase of approximately $3.7 million from last fiscal year. And when you look at your detailed report, that's behind that with the different account numbers on there, you can see that the health insurance line is $3.3 million. There's an increase there of that, so that, this pretty well covers that, this increase. And the other is our salaries that have increased due to the $2,000 and the 3% there. The operational at the bottom there of that, there's no change much in operational. We've actually reduced some of the software costs there, that function. The next functional area is our pupil services. So we're estimating that at $4,765 million with an increase of $321,000 approximately there. And again, the health insurance comes in at about $181,000 on that area of increased cost. The others is change in staff, and then also the increase in those salaries. And not much change in our operational expenses in that area. Next is our improvement of instructional services. We're estimating that expense at $3,237,000 possibly, with an increase of $419,000. And this area, we were able to reduce some of our operational costs there, a couple thousand dollars. And also, we did, you know, some adjustments based on our staffing meetings there for some of the staff that we'll be hiring. And again, also, the health insurance, because it's pretty significant in that area as well. Next is our media services. We're estimating here approximately $1,713,000 with an increase of $138,000, with no change in their operational expenses. So their increase there is just, you know, for health insurance and salary increase. General administration. The cost there would be approximately $1 million with a $58,000 increase there. And again, no change in operational costs, and just changes with the increase in salaries and change of personnel as some of the adjustments there in the health insurance. The next functional area is our school administration. Our principals and a majority of our AP personnel, assistant principal personnel, we're estimating $4,863,000 there with an increase of $293,000 from last fiscal year. And again, no change in that, in operation, just the, you know, health insurance and salaries increase.
And that's pretty much true for all those categories where personnel is at. It's the pay increase that the governor has put into the budget, and thank goodness he did. He sent that money down through the QBE formula for most of the employees. So that's reflected in those numbers, the increase.
Yes, sir.
And the health insurance increase.
That's it.
That's pretty much what all these small increases are.
So we can look at the remainder. You want to go through the rest of those?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So the next portion is support services, that's our business area. And this area, we were able to reduce some of the software costs, because we'll be moving to a new finance and HR software system, so we were able to decrease some of that. So the increase in that function is $4,000 from last year. Function 2600, that's our maintenance and our operations area. We're estimating approximately $6,339,000 there with an increase of $76,000 in that area. This function consists of just classified employees, so for this area, we were actually able to decrease some of the health insurance there due to some staffing changes. You know, we may pick that up when open enrollment comes, but as of right now, that's where that stands. We also had to increase our insurance for our property and our fleet. That increased, and we increased that this year. And as well as some software, some security software, that cost increased this year. And then, our transportation department, we're estimating $4,542 million there with an increase of about $68 million. Operational will remain the same, except for our fuel. I decreased it slightly, because we'll be using SRR3 funding to purchase some of our fuel. Okay? And the rest is your salaries and your health insurance. Support services central, this function actually decreased about approximately $2,000 due to staffing changes. Okay? And other support service areas, that's where we pay our RISA fees each year, so that's at $69,364. And then our other allies and transfers, $400,000. This supports our pre-K program, ROTC, and family connection. We may have to assist them with some of their salaries and benefits in those areas. So the total projected expenses for FY '24 is at $70,900 and $593,000, which would be a balanced budget with the revenue.
And in your notebook, on the budget tab, behind the budget tab, you'll find that summary that she just went over. And then, if you flip over one page past that summary, you'll find the detail for each category.
Yes, sir.
So board members, you have that detailed in your notebook for each one of those categories that she just went over. So after this meeting, if you want to take some time to review that before we have our next budget hearing at the May 11th, maybe you'll have that information around your fingertips. Is there any comments about the budget hearing? Anybody make any comments?
Did I understand you to say that classified would get a 3.5% raise?
Yes, ma'am.
3%?
3%. 3%. Yes, ma'am.
Next one, the next budget hearing, May 11th, we will have our next budget hearing. All right, if there's no comments from the public or the gallery, we will move forward with our meeting, and this will close out the budget hearing. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Satilla Regional Library Board of Trustees. We need to name a trustee to the Satilla Regional Library. And the current term of Angela Booth and Cindy Popiash expired June 30th. Ms. Booth agreed to serve a second term, and Ms. Angelina Brown will replace Ms. Popiash. If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item on the agenda is surplus property. We have a listing of equipment and surplus property that we're asking the board to approve tonight. And Mr. Spikes is here tonight, our facilities and maintenance director. Mr. Spikes, would you describe this surplus that we're asking, this material that we're asking to be declared surplus tonight to the board? Yes, sir, if you'd come to the podium.
It's mostly this, chairs, tables. I mean, there's a lot of office furniture that we no longer use. It's in such disrepair that we no longer need it. It's just taking up space in our warehouse, and the biggest majority of it is either off... either obsolete of furniture, or either it's one-of-a-kind, it's, but most of it has some, some sort of damage to it. There is some special ed, in that, those photos there, there's some special ed, um, equipment that, um, also has been, the stain of vicarous has given us permission to get rid of it. There's also, uh, Satilla's getting new furniture throughout the school, and what, I think the fifth grade would probably be in good shape, but be able to be offered to other schools if any of them wanted. We've already done that with most of this other equipment, it's offered at the others, to, to the other schools, but the fifth grade at Satilla could probably be used at another facility.
So that will be included in this surplus?
Yes, sir. We, we'll hang on to it. We're just trying to clear out enough room to where we have enough to store the good equipment that comes out.
All right. And this will be disposed of on Gov. deals, so people on the open market on Gov. deals will have a chance to buy off of that website.
Yes, sir.
All right. Board members, any questions about that? The next item we have, thank you, Mr. Spikes, for surplus property, is technology equipment. Mr. Adams, could you describe this equipment?
Yes, sir. We've got a, uh, over at the old board office on Ward Street, uh, we've got some, uh, equipment, some active board, smart board, uh, some mounts for projectors, and then a bunch of our old switches, and then over at our office, we have, uh, a surplus of Epsom projectors, the old, old model, and so we want to dispose of, one needs to be recycled, and then sell on Gov. deals, whatever else we can. So thinking the switches, we would probably sell, and along with the projectors, and so that, um, it's outdated, no longer needed. We, uh, we've upgraded switches, and with the two projects this summer, all of our projectors will be upgraded as well. We'll hold a few back, um, just in case we have, have an application for any of, any of those switches or projectors, but the bulk of it will be attempted sold on Gov. deals.
Thank you. And then the next item on the agenda is real estate and surplus property. We advertised the old board office property at 617 Ward Street, and we took sealed bids, and we had one, uh, sealed bid that was submitted, and that was from, as you can see, First Baptist Church, Douglas, Georgia, a bid of $35,000. And so we're going to present that to the board tonight. If we need to discuss real estate in executive session, of course, real estate is a, is an item we can discuss in executive session if we want to later during this work session, so... All right. And property acquisition, West Green Elementary School, uh, we have, uh, made a offer to purchase approximately three acres next, West Green Elementary School, and that offer was accepted, and, uh, we're, we're asking the board to allow us to take action and execute that, that purchase, uh, tonight, basically, and, uh, once again, we can discuss that. That is executive session material, purchase of real estate, so we can discuss that in executive session. All right. At this time, we have the, um, 2023-24 student handbook, and Mr. Lee Mobley's going to present the changes, suggested changes to the handbook.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Uh, just to give, uh, you folks an idea of how we progressed with this, a couple months ago, we put together a team of, uh, elementary, middle, and high school staff, both instructional and, uh, athletic directors, special service representatives, nurse, chief alder, law enforcement, just to help review this as a team. Uh, we went through two, two rounds of revisions, very minimal changes. Obviously, we'll have some changes in staffing that'll be reflected in there. Um, we did realize that our hospital homebound policy was a dated version. We corrected that and put the most up-to-date version there in the handbook. Again, it was very minimal, but we wanted it to be current. Uh, on page 18 and 19, we did make some changes with Level Four discipline. We, uh, we just divided up some of the Level Four categories to try to help with the process of keeping kids in school, streamlining the process, uh, when kids do make mistakes and we have to transition. Uh, we hope the changes will keep kids in school and try to keep our kids from being out of school for long periods of time as they're transitioning, so, uh, you can review those changes, uh, that are listed there. And then finally, on page 37, we just updated some of the language around our lockdown procedures since our strategic system's in place. Um, the information that was there was what we had previously used, and now that it's more automated through, through the system, we just made sure the wording was reflected correctly, that if we were locked down, how that procedure takes place in a school building for our parents, so that would be aware. And besides that, the handbook was in really good shape, um, as far as all of the folks who helped review it, they felt real good about it.
Now, any questions for Mr. Mobley? And this, of course, will not be the last reading. We'll, uh, bring it back to the board on the May 11th meeting if there's any concerns from board members.
Was there any discussion with your group regarding cell phones, student cell phones on campus? I know Camden County has a...
We, we pulled a couple of policies from other districts, and, um, we did have some team members look at those. They were a little different, but they still, um, it was more the use of the phones in the school versus having the phones in the school, and it really didn't very much from what we currently do. We found, we really didn't find any districts that had a, a ban on phones, for lack of a better word, and, uh, I think the consensus of the conversation was our students that are in clubs, extracurricular events, activities, those type of things, very difficult for them to, to do those without having the phones in the schools. So, I know Mr. Allen was, uh, heavily involved in the conversations around that, and, um, and we also talked to Mr. Winters, the upcoming middle school principal, as well as Mr. Drew, and, um, we wanted to just tighten up what we currently have and make sure that we're enforcing the rules that we have in place now, but we're open to any, any ideas to consider for now.
Just curious.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
We'll revisit handbook at our next meeting, and, uh, at this time, I would ask for an executive session to discuss, to discuss the employment of, uh, staff and employees within the school district and disciplinary action or, um, evaluation of employees, and then also real estate, uh, purchase and sale with the school district. Okay, we need a motion to move to the executive session. Mr. Wade. President, on the floor.
Yes, sir.